Okay, next we have the Easton Municipal Facilities DPW Police and Fire Update for the replacement feasibility project.
Thank you, Dottie. So we have an extraordinarily large presentation team joining me tonight. So we'll have seven up here with me, representative of the broad scope of the project. So Greg, I think he'll be here, and everyone else can fill in.
Do you want to introduce the teams?
I will be. So thank you, Dottie, and for everyone here. We are really excited to be here to provide an update on the town's ongoing feasibility phase planning for the replacement of our police, fire, and DPW facilities in town. The goal is for tonight's presentation to be comprehensive, covering the origins of this project through various milestones along the way, which established why it's time to replace police, fire, and DPW in Easton, what the conditions that exist today are at those buildings to warrant such a decision, what team has been assembled to advance the project working with the Municipal Building Committee. The Chair, Andy Williams, is here with us tonight. What our work to date has shown, and where we will be going in the next six weeks before the Municipal Building Committee picks a preferred alternative to enter into schematic -- oh, sorry, I didn't realize you had a clicky -- before we enter into schematic design. So before I introduce the large team I have with me, who are going to go into much more detail on this project, I wanted to just give a quick overview and reminder of why this project. Our DPW water, police, and fire facilities, particularly at Luthrip Street, range from 50 to more than 70 years old. They are antiquated and not up to a variety of accessibility, safety, and environmental codes. They are too small for the equipment and the personnel that they house, resulting in overcrowding of equipment and exposure to the elements of that equipment, confinement of personnel to crowded facilities with inadequate space to work safely. The facilities are past their useful lives, and continued annual capital spending on repairs is no longer a sound financial investment. Feasibility is the first step in ascertaining the appropriate and necessary replacement options available to the community in a proactive and responsible manner rather than reactive and emergency repair basis while these buildings further degrade and the community continues to grow. So while tonight represents a significant milestone for this project as we enter the final stage of feasibility leading into schematic design, it follows years of work stemming back at least to 2014 when the town engaged in a comprehensive facilities assessment study with Doran Whittier, which ID'd more than 300 million in building repair replacement needs across the town and schools. This study itself was one of the predicates that led to the MSBA process that invited Center School in and has resulted in the very soon-to-be-complete Blanch Ames Elementary School. In 2019, the Municipal Building Committee, working with the Director of Public Works, Dave Field, updated that already extremely large repair number to 2019 figures and concluded that it was time to replace police, fire, and DPW. As we just heard, with the Affordable Housing Trust, COVID threw a wrench in that, paused that effort for a couple of years. But then in 2021, we began picking the ball back up on this project in earnest again, went to town meeting last fall in November, seeking a half million in feasibility funds, which was approved, and we have been working on that to bring us here tonight. So following tonight's update, we plan to spend September engaging the community by hosting building tours, public meetings in person and on Zoom, and going to civic events and fall festivals to raise awareness about the project in advance of the anticipated October 4 vote of the Municipal Building Committee to pick a preferred alternative to advance to the schematic design phase. Given the enormous scope of this project, we have assembled a multidisciplinary team working with the Municipal Building Committee and the Select Board, represented here tonight by Director Field, Chief Boone, Deputy John Carroll, as well as Walter Hartley and Chris Lauffler of PMA, who are our owner's project manager, and designers Greg Joint from Castle Booze Associates and Brian McCusker of Weston and Sampson. As we touch on each department, you will hear from our design experts regarding the current deficiencies and challenges at each of these facilities, and then each department head will kind of talk about what that means day-to-day for an impact on their personnel and our ability to serve the public. And with that, I'm happy to turn it over to Walter, our owner's project manager, to take us through the next portion of our update.
Thank you, Connor. Good evening, Select Board. Connor did a great job kind of prefacing everything that's happened to date, so I'm going to take you looking forward to the next year, year and a half. So we've been in our feasibility study. There are two really deliverables at that point, and we're really following that MSBA model that you heard so much about that really led us to that great solution of the Blanch Ames Project, the preliminary design program, and then what you heard Connor speaking about, the preferred schematic report. To get to that preferred schematic report and the culmination of that does end in that final solution. And as Connor mentioned, on October 6, we are going to be looking for the Municipal Building Committee to make a selection of one of the three alternatives you'll see in the presentation coming up. There's been a lot of background work, but looking forward, what would occur in schematic design is very similar to the Blanch Ames Project. Interior/exterior design, so today you won't see any exterior/interior design of a project, but really just the solutions that are going to be able to solve the problem that exists in Easton. Detailed room layouts, finalizing the project scope and establishing a project budget, which of course will be everyone's initial question. I can get that out of the way now. We do not have estimates currently. Those will be going to the estimators for conceptual estimates in the next day or so. They will be reviewed with the Municipal Building Committee at that October 4 meeting, where that decision will be made. Once the schematic design is selected, we'd be looking for an April to August district approval and vote. We're targeting right now a June of 2023 vote for funding for that type of project. At that point in time, the scope would be locked in for that project, the budget would be locked in, and we'd be able to present that information for the price, inclusive of the tax impact, local impact to anything in the town as well. Really very, very similar to the process that was done at Blanch Ames. Pending a successful vote at that point in time, we'd move to a year, to a year and a couple months of design, detailed design. So we go through three stages at that point in time with estimates at each one of the phases. That include a detailed design estimate, a 60% construction document estimate, a 90% construction document estimate, which will be followed by bidding at that point in time. So that really takes you all right up to the end of, or beginning of construction for that timeline. Highlighting those key dates within the feasibility and the schematic design, July 2022, the NBC made those recommendations for further study. September 22, cost analysis is going to be ongoing. We're going to get to that a little bit earlier in the next few days, getting that over to the estimators. And then October 2022, Municipal Building Committee vote to approve that preferred solution. The key dates in the schematic design are going to be early February 2023, schematic design estimating, March Municipal Building Committee approval of that schematic design scope and budget. So we'll work to get everything within the budget that we can get in and hit those numbers. And then the June 2023 local funding authorization. Turn it over to Greg for his update.
Thank you all. And so as part of this process, we took a long time looking at your existing conditions and your existing locations to have a, you know, deep understanding of what you're dealing with currently, and able to make our recommendations for how to move forward with a project. So, you know, this was a, I don't want to say townwide, but pretty close to a townwide study of a number of different facilities that we'll talk about. And we'll start with the DPW. Brian will take that for the DPW and talk about DPW facilities and their.
Yeah, so, good evening. I'm Brian from Weston and Sampson. So the Public Works currently has a few different sites, and you know, they have the Easton Woodshop, which is located at the Town Pool. They have their main DPW headquarters at 130 Center Street, and then the Water Division is, you know, next to the Fire Department on Bay Road. It's, needs to be consolidated. It's not very efficient layout currently. It's just very difficult for the personnel to kind of work with each other. It kind of makes inefficient operations. Next slide. So one of the main conditions at the main headquarters at 130 Street, 130 Center Street, excuse me, is the latest addition was built in 1972. That is over 50 years ago. The original part of the building was built in the 50s. It is crumbling, and these buildings cannot be salvaged for the new scope of what the DPW needs. So we have gone through, done the existing conditions, and right now, one of the other issues is here, is they have to store equipment outside, as you can see in that bottom-left photo. This is a very expensive fleet that the DPW maintains. So some of the replacements needed, you know, consolidation of the departments and divisions, excuse me, you know, immediate need for updated facilities and technology, and then storing the fleet indoors. Further on, we will get to some of the cost benefits to that. Do you want to talk any deficiencies?
Yeah, so, you know, the big thing with our deficiencies, it's not environmentally safe. We are not up to environmental regulations, and we're not safe for the workers and anyone who visits the DPW. We don't meet any health and safety regulations. And so that's my biggest concern, is that, you know, this building isn't serving the residents.
And now, we're on to the salt storage shed. This is its own thing. It's obviously not, you know, a super important building, but at the same time, you store your salt in here, and everybody during the winter who wants the salt did roads, you know, first, right? They also have brine tanks to the right. There's a few other on the site that aren't in this photo. Right now, this currently can't handle all the salt, so you have to kind of maintain your deliveries, and sometimes the deliveries are difficult during emergency responses. So, any more on that?
Yeah, it's not ideal to not be able to store your full winter's need. We do order as soon as we use, we replenish, but in 2015, we saw the back of the shed, and it was very nerve-wracking for everyone because we basically were out of salt, and you couldn't get it from any supplier. So having a bigger shed would help us, you know, bridge that need.
We get that question just about every time. We have a big snowstorm one year, and we couldn't get the salt, and we had to get it from two different contractors, and people were saying, "Why don't you just stock up on more salt?" That's why.
That's why. We're busting at the seams. We put more in there than we probably should. The walls are bowing. Again, the whole facility is dated. It's served us for 70 years, but it's not going to for much longer.
And once again, here's the outdoor vehicle storage. As you can see, that dump truck cannot fit under this. You see this all the time with modern-day vehicles not fitting in, you know, older buildings. This is a very expensive fleet. And then as we get further in, we'll actually show more on this, but it's also dangerous for the employees during inclement weather events, right? You have to clear the vehicles. You have to get up on there. It's slippery. They're tall. And then it's also not the best practice if there are leaks and spills, which, you know, a lot of vehicles do. So if they're indoors, you can contain it, you can treat it, and then send it out to sewer. So.
To be clear, there's no containment and treatment here?
Zero.
Right. So you have an issue with oil, fuel?
Yep. So in one example, too, even the vehicles that come inside to be worked on, we have no active floor drains in the facility. It was designed for floor drains. They were capped many years ago due to other environmental regulations. So we have, you know, melting snow and hydraulic oil that's leaking out of broken lines as we're repairing them, and it pools and puddles up to a couple inches of depth during a snowstorm in the garage at various locations. Not a safe situation. And that's kind of contained, but any other leaks outside aren't contained in the site slopes down to wetlands.
And then here, as we're talking about the fleet, you know, one of the things with the vehicles is you can get approximately three years on the life of the vehicle if they're stored indoors and washed appropriately, which is the APWA best practice, the American Public Works Association. You know, a couple things is you have less vehicle idling, you have faster responses, less employee injuries, you know, quieter for neighbors. You have to run these things for, you know, sometime in the winter when you're responding to an inclement event. We'll get further in on that with the sites. You know, some of the sites for DPWs aren't abut in neighbor, so that's better. Currently at 130 Center Street, they do. One of the things, too, with the vehicles you can see here is the main issue with these vehicles is they rot out. They don't, the engines don't seize or die. It's the undercarriage rot, and that's one of the reasons you have to turn them over.
One of the big deficiencies we have for the entire town, we do not have a vehicle wash. So that really limits what we can do to keep down the corrosion. We rinse off our vehicles during the winter. We rinse off with just pure water to remove salt, but we can't do that if temperatures are below zero. So this could be weeks on end where these trucks cannot be cleaned. There's residue all over them, and actually salt chunks and cakes all in our conveyor belts, all under the chassis, and that's leading to what you see on those pictures.
Dave, do you know off the top of your head roughly what's the value of our fleet, including police and fire, that we don't have a wash for?
I don't have the police and fire number. The DPW number is around nine million.
Nine million?
This is the replacement cost of our fleet, and that number's a little dated, so I'll probably have to update that to get a more accurate picture. But, and then the police and fire, I'm not sure if you know your numbers offhand.
One fire truck's a million, so.
Exactly.
It adds up quick.
Oh, and here's the Water Division. That's part of the DPW as well. They are on their own site. This building is not accessible. As we know, it's on Bay Road next to the existing fire station. You know, it was a school-turned-water division. In the back, they also have a little bit of a yard. You can see that in the Google Earth 3D view that they store stuff. So there's a few multiple locations where the, you know, DPW is storing materials needed for emergencies. And the Water Department as well does need to respond to some emergencies when, you know, pipes break, and sometimes their material is not adequately stored, and that becomes an issue as well. And then the building is located on Center Street as well. Okay, I'll turn it back to Greg for the public scene.
Thanks, Brian. And I think you'll see kind of some recurring themes here around your building ages. These buildings were built before ADA was adopted, so accessibility is an issue at almost all of the facilities, something that you're exempt from until you start renovating them. As you start to engage in upgrades or renovations, it will start to trigger that code-related requirement. I would say the same goes for fire protective systems. So most of these buildings are not sprinklered. When you go to upgrade a building in the case where you want to renovate it, you're required to go in and provide those systems in that system. So as we look at the buildings, these are all things that we take into consideration. In addition to those structural upgrades, when you're modifying a building heavily to meet current needs, structural upgrades become required if you're not exempted for a historic preservation or some other reason. So as we start to evaluate the buildings, something that may look nice or in reasonable shape really has a different context when you start to look into the code upgrades required by heavy modification of the building to meet current codes. So we'll go through public safety, existing police facilities. On Lothrup Street, this is the newer portion of the building, still an outdated facility and really isn't conducive to modern-day police work. It was renovated 30 years ago, so most of those items have reached the end of their useful life, and replacement is needed on a lot of the individual items, windows, doors, mechanical systems, things like that. The fire side of this building also, we'll get to in a little bit, but has asbestos in it, so abating the facility would be part of any renovation. So as we look to what the building does operationally, we look first at kind of what the storage limits are, kind of how things are overlapping. And I think Chief Boone can talk a bit about how individual pieces of their operation overlap in certain areas that really isn't conducive to their day-to-day operations.
And you want me to stop with, right here, what you're looking at is really our garage, our generator, and our large storage property. So what ends up happening if we have to take possession of a vehicle, for example, a bad car accident, so to speak, and we have to maintain that, be able to be processed, that goes in that garage. The way this photo was taken is you're standing in the bay. So that essentially closes down that garage. It could be several months until the vehicle gets processed. So we've now really sealed off that entire part of the building, and we ended up adding a video camera to this just to preserve the integrity of that area. We are an accredited police department, which I'm very proud of. We're actually coming up on our assessment in a few months. This will be our fifth time, but I have to get waivers because we have no fire suppression other than that fire extinguisher you see in the corner. We have no sprinkler system to protect anything that may happen. If you could flip the next slide, I know that there is, on the left, a little blurry, but that's our property and evidence room. We have evidence that we may have to hold on to forever, and there is things in there dating back to the 1960s that we'll never be able to get rid of. We'll never be able to purge. Just, we have to hold on to them for the sensitive nature of what the items are. So we've now outgrown our property room. So it's as organized as it can be, but in a few months when we have our assessment, we have to bring them into that property room. And one of the notes we're going to get about best practices is to reassign property to different shelves. We just don't have the areas to add shelves. What you're seeing on the right is the chief's conference room, and that is our overstock for PPE. We didn't have anything other than really a janitor's closet to maintain our first aid, so we were housing everything in that conference room for the better part of two years, where Chief Sullivan and I were the only people that could get in there and ration out our supplies. So that effectively made that conference room completely off limits, and it limited any community meetings we could have or any staff meetings. So we really had nowhere to go but to ask the DPW if we could borrow their room, reserve a room at Town Hall. We weren't able to do anything really out of the police station just because of that fact alone. So what you're seeing on the left is the central records location of the police department. That's the back of the building, and if anyone's taken a tour, you'll understand what it is. We are scheduling a tour coming up, so I encourage everyone to come. That really is the, prior to 1991, everything was paper. The daily logs, the police reports, everything was paper, and we're required to keep most of that. We have a retention schedule. Some can be purged after 20 years, but what you see there is we're going to be holding on to forever. And again, fire suppression systems, if we ever had an issue in that building, we could essentially be destroying all those records that, a lot of those date back to the 1930s. So we have to preserve those. We can't scan and destroy. I've asked the supervisor of records if we're to do that. There are some things we can, but we are required to keep the original copy of a lot of those documents, so they're coming with us regardless of wherever we go.
And to be clear, that's a hallway.
And that's a hallway. So the picture doesn't do it justice. What you're seeing on the right is our training and our roll call room. It's really set up for a maximum of 12 people, but if anyone's ever been in there, it's a lot having 12 people in there. We typically run six officers per shift. We have to have at least four working, but, so it's crowded just doing day-to-day operations in there. It's, that really is the hub of the police department. If we're ever having a sensitive conversation with a resident or there's a victim of a crime, everything is taking place right there, so there's no real confidentiality, and it doesn't make for open dialogue with potentially a victim or a resident that wants to talk to us about a concern. We could be processing a detainee, and they have to walk right by. The officer's doing their police reports. There's really nowhere else to go in the building. We truly outgrown it in that sense.
Yeah, so I'd say, chief, the biggest thing we've noticed in terms of space is that most things are along a path of travel. So as you were talking about, as you're releasing detainees from the detention area, they may be walking through where the officer that arrested them wrote the report, and by their desks, which really isn't a best practice. And when we talk about de-escalating situations and getting people released quickly, making sure they have a clear path to exit, to be picked up, and to not interact more than necessary with maybe an arresting officer is really the best practice in what we would typically do in a normal facility. The department just doesn't have that opportunity here.
Correct. And just on that room on the right, our training room, we used to host domestic violence meetings in there. We would have, our hugs group would be in there, and we would have to literally ask them to leave to go into the lobby while we were processing people because there was no way to secure that area. So it became really inconvenient. We stopped having the meetings there. They ended up having them elsewhere. But, so it really limits what we can offer to the community. One thing that we would try to use is a shared spot with the DPW, an EOC. We couldn't run an EOC out of the police station. It would have to be done through the DPW. So it really limits a lot of opportunities for the community to come in and actually be part of the police department during some of these things, so.
And so now we'll jump over to the fire side of things. We'll start, we'll do the stations in order, just to make it a little bit easier. Station 1, so same building on the other side of the wall. This is where the kind of mechanical equipment is housed in that building. Look, everything's working currently, but things are aging out. The town has maintained and replaced certain pieces of equipment as they've needed to, but nothing in this building is, I'd say, new. Nothing is within the last 10 years, probably. I think the hot water heaters are probably the newest thing in there. The building has a number of issues that we talked about on the police side. I would say those are kind of amplified on the fire side because this is the older portion of the building. Primarily, the building just was not built for the apparatus of today and the fire operations of today. The department has made it work for many years, but could be doing better in a more updated facility with a bit more room. And Deputy Chief is here to talk a bit about the impacts of the building on their day-to-day operations. So Deputy Chief, I'll throw to you and let you talk about the apparatus bay.
Glad that picture got blown up. So obviously, space is a big concern of ours. Every one of our single bays has either two or more pieces of equipment in it. This particular bay has three, two ambulances, and our Kubota, which is housed on a trailer, stored on a trailer. One of the biggest response readiness issues with this truck is in order to actually, after a call when they clear the hospital, to become response-ready and decon the stretcher, the truck actually has to be outside. You can't pull the stretcher out because of the trailer that's behind the ambulance, so it creates a delay in becoming response-ready for the constituents of the town. That's one of our biggest issues with the building is just space. Equipment is gone. We've gotten more equipment, luckily. Our trucks have also gotten bigger, and because we've gotten busier call-volume-wise, we're no longer retiring trucks. So we have four ambulances now, two frontline, two spare, which we utilize quite frequently. So we're able to keep an ambulance in service instead of diverting to another town. So I think that is the biggest highlight of this photo, is just that that truck needs to be outside of the station to actually become response-ready after a call.
So obviously, when the weather's nice, that's not as much of a problem, but in inclement weather, that really takes a toll on the operations, getting that truck back ready to go out onto a response. You know, and so that's on the response time, and we'll talk a little bit about the training. You know, as you probably know, fire is constantly training their staff during the day, and I'll let Deputy Chief talk a little bit about kind of the old hose tower, which is used for a lot of training.
Yes, these pictures actually kind of depict it well. It's like the evolution of the hose tower in the fire service. So the picture on the right, at the very top, you can see little metal poles that stick out. So we'd actually hang our fire hose on there after a fire to dry the hose, but fabrics and technology have improved enough that we just pack it back on the truck now. We don't really need to dry the hose. So the tower then evolved into a training platform. Unfortunately, that tower's too tight to throw one of our ground ladders, so we'd utilize the, there's a ladder on the left of that picture that's enclosed. It's a wall ladder that goes straight up. So it got us up there, but we weren't allowed to reinforce that muscle memory of throwing the ground ladder and really reinforcing our basic principles of firefighting. And the top would actually use to rappel off and do like tech rescue drills off the top of it. And it has since, it just failed. It's no longer safe. So like most spaces in all of the buildings, we have any extra nook and So like most spaces in all of the buildings, we have any extra nook and cranny defaults to storage. So it went from being a hose tower to a training facility, and now it is a storage for us. But ideally, in a new facility, there's multiple platforms. You can actually put a ladder to our ground ladders, to different anchor points, like actual certified anchor points that we can rappel off of and get some really good training in instead of kind of the makeshift that we had to do in the past, so.
And I think, so what we would look to design in the future would be, like Deputy Chief said, a hose tower that's geared toward training, that allows for the training to happen safely with multiple kind of progressions of that training. So you start at a more simple, lower height in the training revolutions. And as the trainee gets more comfortable, they move up and get more comfortable rappelling or things like that that aren't maybe a first-year kind of thing that they would do, but are able to practice a number of different bailouts, ladder revolutions, in a safe manner. And just to talk a little bit about space, obviously, the space for all of these departments is deficient. And so what that leads to is kind of dual-role spaces. So here you can see that their exercise equipment is housed with their SCBA fill station. So what they use to fill the packs with breathable air for their fire responses is in their physical training room. It's not the best practice. We like to see those things separated so that if there is an accident with that equipment, it's, you know, filling pressure vessels under high pressure. It's contained within there. They have modern equipment that really mitigates that risk a lot. But having it in a separate defined space for that sealed off from the rest of the operations is an important thing. So we'll jump to Station Two. So Station Two, Depot Street, was recently renovated and is serving the department pretty well. But there are a number of deficiencies here that we would expect to see differently in a modern firefighting facility. So the biggest two I'll point out is just, one, the lack of space, and, two, the lack of decontamination and storage of the turnout gear. We'll touch on this a little bit more in a couple of slides. But those are the things that we would expect to see in a modern facility that just aren't here. Again, the building was beautifully renovated. It's about half a mile from my house. I drive by it every day. But it just isn't really viable for, you know, a 50-year solution for the fire department. So you can see there's kind of a limited amount of space on that parcel. It's a very small parcel. It was a 1930s-era building. And so what that leads to is a small apparatus bay and turnout gear, which you can see here on the wall, being stored out in the bays for the entire station here. So we would look to see that in a more defined room that was under negative pressure so that those contaminants don't get out into the rest of the station. So we'll talk a bit more about that a little later. And we'll jump to Station Three. So Station Three is where administration is currently. They're kind of have built a number of administrative offices out in the building to go from what was, I think, originally a call department or volunteer department to a professional department over time. So the building has evolved with the department, but is still a little bit small for their current operations. But this is the most recent building, and it's a 1980s-era building. So, you know, with that age, things have started to reach the end of their useful life. Penetration systems, windows, doors, roofing systems, mechanical systems have all kind of started to age out and are, you know, ready to be replaced. Nothing's at the point of failure yet, but, you know, as we look to solve the department needs for, you know, the foreseeable future, those are things that were identified in the 2014 report that haven't really been addressed to this point and, you know, continue to be an ongoing issue for the department and will become more of an issue in the not-too-distant future.
Great. It might be important to note, too, along with administration, there's two full-time, or 24-hour, 24/7, 365 coverage, just two firefighter staff there. Our mechanic is already, are also out of there. Our CERT team is out of there, all their supplies, their rehab buses in that station. And we also house a hazmat truck. So, but it is filled to the gills, for lack of a better term.
Yeah, and it's, you know, the same with all the stations, where they are really filled with the equipment that the town needs to operate on a day-to-day basis. You know, I think you have a couple of backup engines stored out in the parking lot at this time, from time to time, an extra CERT bus, I think. So those things would be better off served indoors with the DPW equipment. And the same goes for the fire equipment. That lack of a wash facility, you know, does impact the lifespan of those engines and other apparatus. So like we said, issues with space, you know, the biggest issue space-wise for the line firefighters here is really, you know, the lack of adequate female facilities. The demographic of the fire service is starting to change and will inevitably change in the future. So making sure the department is prepared for that is an important thing. You know, they're making it work now, but, you know, as that demographic starts to change, we'll see a lot more need for facilities for female firefighters.
I was waiting for you to say that through all of these slides because even with the DPW and police, that's really important. And we've been really working hard to try to diversify all of our departments by gender. And I think, you know, we're making some headway on that. But it's certainly more inviting when there are appropriate facilities.
And I want to say that the departments are doing their best with what they have to make accommodations. But being set up for success in that way is a much different thing than making things work. So just a little talk about firefighter health and, you know, decontamination in laundry and storage of turnout gear. So firefighter health has become a pretty big topic on the fire service. I'd say in the last 10 years, even more so within the last five years. Cancer is the leading cause of death of line, you know, active-duty firefighters by a staggering amount. I think it's 66% of active-duty deaths are caused by cancer and 14% are due to heart attacks. So that kind of gives you an idea of the issue. It's a big focus, and Easton currently doesn't have any decontamination facilities. So we'll talk a little bit about what one of those would look like in the next slide. But the department is doing the very best they can. I think, Deputy, if you want to just run through how you decontaminate now, and we can talk about how you might want to do it in the future.
And actually, just for the non-first responders room, why it's so important that there's appropriate decontamination for folks coming in.
It all ends with not bringing the contamination home. So it really starts at the fire scene. So there's all kinds of harmful and toxic gases that come from smoke. And naturally, when you're inside a house fighting a fire, that gets absorbed into your gear. But we've also found that it gets absorbed into your skin. Like, no matter how much you put on, it still gets in. So we do a gross decontamination on the fire scene. They're actually, when you're done, they spray you off with a fire hose and rinse off all the heavy contaminants. And then back at the firehouse is kind of where we're lacking. We don't have the ability to shower and get the contaminants off of us before we go into our living space. So we have to enter our living space with everything on us in order to shower and properly decontaminate. But we're behind the eight ball because we're supposed to do that initial shower outside with our gear completely separate of our living space before we even get inside. We just, we can't do that. Another area, you see the gear racks. There are open gear racks inside the garage. We're supposed to have a negative pressure room with where our turnout gear is. So there's no, it's a two-way contamination. So we wash our gear to get all the contaminants off. But then we have to protect our gear. So if it's hanging in the garage and a truck pulls in, it's absorbing that truck exhaust. It's getting more carcinogens on it. Whereas if it's in a, what they do now, a proper room, it's sealed off. It doesn't have the ability to get that carcinogens on it. And you actually have a clean set of gear when you're going to a call. So it's kind of a twofold. I believe we have a picture coming up that depicts it pretty well. But we are, like I said, we're doing the best with what we have. The gear extractors are night and day from what we had even 10 years ago in as far as getting the carcinogens out of our gear. But it's keeping it out when it's sitting in the station. And having the ability to shower off and get the contaminants off us before we go into our living space is a huge hurdle that we need to face.
Yeah, and so, you know, talking about what that could potentially or should really look like, you know, kind of walking through, a truck pulls back into the apparatus bay, firefighters would get out after being the, you know, after having that gross decontamination. And they would go directly into the decon room. So that decon room, it has a large, you know, kind of drench shower, has some sinks in order to take their gear off, start to wash that stuff down. They're able to wash down some equipment, stretcher boards, backboards, things like that in that room as well to make sure those get back into service quickly. And then you go directly into the laundry room. So they're taking their turnout gear from the decon into the laundry room where it gets laundered. You know, washer extractors to get those, that turnout gear cleaned, you know, firefighters' safety equipment cleaned, as well as all of their breathing apparatus cleaned, stored, and then back into service. So doing that quickly and making sure that doesn't continue with them into the station is important. That connection through, over to the turnout gear storage area, where off-duty turnout gear is stored. So people who are on shift would have their gear stored here. That room is designed in negative pressure so that contaminants from in there aren't getting out and sealed off from the apparatus bay. So contaminant from the truck isn't getting into the turnout gear and re-soiling it. For the firefighter, he would continue on to showering. So now you're going to get into, you know, an actual shower that you can clean yourself before you go back into the bunk and day room area of the station, making sure that that area stays as clean as possible when the firefighters are coming back from an incident. You know, the numbers kind of speak for themselves in terms of cancer diagnoses. For firefighters, 9% more than the general population for diagnoses and 14% more in related deaths. So, you know, the firefighting service will never be a safe job, I'd say. But, you know, our intent is to minimize that risk as much as possible and make sure that the things get cleaned up as effectively as possible. I would say that this is an ongoing area of research and evolution. So as those improvements and standards are made, we get them incorporated into our designs as quickly as possible. So, Dan, the sound's not working. No? So, can you start that slide again?
Yep.
I think so. We'll just try again. Is it?
I think it's on, you just got turned off.
Just the TV or the computer?
It must've turned off. I don't know if it timed up.
Sorry, I think our, yeah.
Yeah, timed up.
Our soundbar is energy-saving. We practiced.
So one of our challenges is that the way our three-station system runs, we have four, five firefighters at Lockwood Street, Station One, staffing the ambulance and engine or a ladder truck 24/7, 365. And at Depot Street, our Station Two, we have two firefighters who staff an engine 24/7, 365. So the coverage is always available on at those stations. The challenge we have is that the Boundaries Street, north of Mansfield side of Easton, has gotten much busier. And our Bay Road station is staffed with two firefighters. But they have to choose between taking the ambulance or the fire engine to cover that side of town. So the ambulance is out, which is many, many hours a day taking care of our residents. That leaves that side of town without a permanently staffed fire engine. So that's a challenge for us, that when we have a call on that side of town and the ambulance is already out, we have to bring resources in from further away to manage that situation. Our staff does a great job of handling it, but we're exploring our options on how we can maybe do that better in the future.
And so I think, you know, Chief is alluding to the current staffing and the locations of which the stations are. You know, as we talked about a little bit earlier, stations were developed in a model of firefighting that was a volunteer basis. And, you know, obviously, the fire service has evolved. And as we're looking to the next 50 years of service for the town, I think it's important that we understand all of the challenges, not just building, but operational, so that we present solutions that are effective for those next 50 years of service. So we'll go a bit through kind of the initial programming. So that was the existing conditions part of the study. And now we'll talk about the programming, so the forward-looking piece of what kind of the future holds for the departments and what their needs really are. So just a note on the fire service and what our study includes. So a fire response time study is part of our scope in this project. So what that does is it's an analysis of your existing response time data to make us understand what your response times are for incidents for the fire service, how you're responding to things, and, you know, where any inefficiencies are or where room for improvement could come. And then it looks forward for the potential solutions. So we take the solutions that will be presented, and we look at those solely in terms of fire response and what that does to the fire response for the department throughout the town. So the response study is ongoing. We expect results within a week or so. And that will be part of the evaluation of options as we go through that with the municipal building committee. The outcomes really for the town are, you know, reliable data on response times. So data you can count on that is objective and based in, you know, the facts of what you have been currently doing and, you know, modern fire planning by a consultant that specializes in this and does this throughout the country. And it will come with a recommendation for potential site selection. So our consultant will recommend actions that may be taken with potential sites, what their benefits and challenges are, so that not only can they be understood by the community as these decisions are made, but can help the department and, you know, to understand what, in ways in which they may need to operate in the future. So going into the master programming, so kind of how much space everybody needs. We looked at the program from separate facilities. And ultimately, those will be modified slightly as we go through the options and facilities start to combine together. So for police, you know, one facility at about 32,000 square feet. For fire, one new facility at about 39,000 square feet. Versus, and potentially, a renovated facility or a new substation, you know, between, you know, say, 8,000 and 12,000 square feet. And public works, so a new public works facility, and we think that's about 60,000 square feet. Just as a reference, you know, if you were to house every single piece of equipment indoors for public works, you would be up around 75,000 square feet. So some potential solutions to kind of limit square footage, but still keep the majority of your fleet inside, will be for some covered canopies and things like that for equipment that's not as temperature-sensitive, I'd say. So fixed equipment that's not, you know, running. You have a multimillion-dollar fleet, obviously, that we talked about and that needs to be undercover. And a vehicle wash to protect and lengthen the service life is part of the program and which other departments in the town will obviously use. So it won't be a solely DPW-related function.
I didn't ask one question about that besides, wouldn't it make more sense to go with the 75,000 square feet anticipating that you may end up with larger vehicles and more need to do securing vehicles, et cetera?
Yeah, so I will throw to Brian, but, you know, we thought about that. And I think the smaller square footage does account for growth and the size of vehicle changes. I'll let you take the answer, but...
Yeah, so...
Yeah, so, you know, sometimes when we do the analysis of the fleet in the covered storage. You know, some of the trucks are take home, some of them, you know, aren't as temperature sensitive. Yes, the 75,000 gross square foot would probably be the best solution. But, you know, we do want to be sensitive to the price and make sure that, you know, this actually does get built versus kind of the sticker shock. You know, a lot of times when we build the salt shed, there's always canopies off that as well, which, you know, equipment's stored under. So there are kind of multiple outbuildings that are kind of associated with this as well. But the 59,000 square feet is pretty much the administration, the employee facilities, the vehicle maintenance. Which also includes the fire department maintenance as well, which is kind of a new item in Easton or newer. And then, you know, the Regla storage, which, you know, eventually I think, you know, you will be able to see the floor plan and all the vehicles listed with the tags. So I think.
Thank you.
I think that's a great question though, because one of the things, you know, what on the school planning committee envisioning, that school's going to need to last 50 to 75 years. We don't even have any comprehension of what that's going to look like then. So it's a real challenge to figure out things like, you know, capacity or use over that period of time. You don't want to be penny wise and pound foolish and then 20 years down the road, they'll be saying, why didn't they think, you know, about this or that? So I appreciate that question, Craig.
So, you know, as we do that, you know, the kind of three red-legged stool is the program. Looking at the existing facilities and then looking at potential new sites. And so as part of the study, we're going to look at three options for further study that we'll talk about in a second. And so let's talk a little bit about potential sites for the future. So in addition to all of the existing sites, we looked at three potential sites for further development. So the first being Daley's Corner. So this is a portion of the Stonehill property across from Hilliards, you know, on Washington and Main. The second is the Center School site. So obviously with the Blanche Ames opening, the Center School site becomes available. And the third is the Gill property. So we'll go quickly through those three properties. I'll let Brian from Weston Sampson give a little overview with those properties. Brian?
Yeah, and, you know, at Weston Sampson, we're also the civil engineering team and the environmental team for this project as well. So right here at Daley Corner, you can kind of see that yellow outline is the buildable lot with the offsets. From the wetlands and the intermittent stream that actually occurs on the other side of Washington Street. So the thought process here was to be able to put a fire substation or possible other buildings here, as, you know, Greg will show later. But you have the potential development of eight acres. Now that's not a lot for public safety, DPW, and, you know, a fire station. But, you know, you might be able to put out a wire here. Some of the challenges we have, it's not town-owned currently. There are a lot of wetlands that are kind of making a oddly shaped site, and then there is no sewer connection. So you would have to put a septic on this. Here at Center School, as we know, it's getting closed. And it's currently town-owned. It's a great central location, previously developed. Once again, the potential development area is kind of low for multiple buildings on the site. 7.5 acres. You know, some of the challenges you're going to have to deal with is you're going to have to demolish the existing building. You have residential butters, which we all know doesn't really work for emergency operations sometimes. You have the wetlands out in the front and the back. And then that proximity to that new intersection that is under construction currently. No sewer connection as well. The Gill property, you know, the benefits of this was that it's town-owned. It was, you know, acquired a few years ago. It's a great central location. The sewer connection, which is ideal for the DPW. If not, you have to do a bunch of tight tanks and DEP regulations for the vehicle wash, which is expensive to maintain. Can be done, but is expensive. You know, limited of butters, as you can see, you have some commercial down page south. And then the potential development was 10 acres and that's, you know, as indicated in that general fund. So that yellow outline is within wetlands and buildable area at, I think, is that a little bit of?
About 19 acres.
19?
That are potentially buildable there. Obviously CPA funds were used, so the development is limited to 10 acres. So we'll look at what that means for, you know, potential use. So options for further study. So the building committee last month looked at a number of options. I think it's eight total. And was able to narrow it down to three potential options for further study, which is where we are now. So I will spare you all from running through every single option. But we've looked at pretty much every combination of combining sites feasible within these existing sites and the three new potential sites. And ultimately, the building committee has narrowed that down to option one, which is a new public safety building at Daley Corner. A new DPW at Gill property and renovations of the Bay Road Fire Station Number Three into a substation. Option 3B, which is a new police facility at Gill property, a new DPW facility at Gill property. A new fire headquarters, so fire only, at Daley Corner. And renovations of that substation, you know, of that Station Three into a substation on Bay Road. And then option 5B, which the committee took the ability to make their own in the building committee meeting, which was great. So that is a new police and fire combined at Gill property with a DPW also on that site. And then a new substation at Daley Corner. So fire headquarters would be on Gill property with all the other departments. And Gill Corner would become a substation for coverage.
Just before we move on, I want to just note, following closely, you'll notice that the existing DPW on Center. And the existing police-fire lowthorpe are not among these options for redevelopment. I think it's really important to just address that the challenges that were identified at two of these, namely wetlands and no sewer. Are true at those, except on significantly smaller portions that are surrounded in a residential area. Less acreage, similar challenges. And, you know, so if those were considered, those are really good.
Phasing.
Oh, yeah, that huge part. It was phasing as well. If you were trying to redevelop on an existing site where staff is occupying, you would need to have phasing of the construction. It's very difficult to run 24/7 operations out of a phased construction project. But I just wanted to know that that was reviewed. Municipal Building Committee had a really good conversation about a lot of those options. And that's really one of the items about Daley's Corner and Gill that's really advantageous is there's no residential butters. And although eight and a half to 10 acres is not necessarily as much as you would like to have it be as easy as possible to develop. It's significantly larger than, I think, two acres, which is what we're working with. So just wanted to make that point.
Yeah, no, it's a, it's a good, good point. And you can see option six, you know, the redevelopment of the DPW was considered. But ultimately, there are just better options that could be pursued. And allows the town to do other things that may be more appropriate with those parcels.
Another question, I'm sorry. The Gill property could potentially have access to the sewer, but Daley does not.
Correct, correct.
And with the Daley property, there is the issue of wetlands surrounding that piece of property?
Yes, I mean, this is Easton, so wetlands are essentially a challenge on every piece of land that's not already built on, but yes.
Yeah, and I think, you know, and you'll see a little bit of this in the options that we'll present tonight. These are things that are manageable. It's just a matter of what becomes more advantageous for the town based on the existing conditions that are there and how we can respond to them. So, you know, option one, for example, this is with the public safety building on Daley Corner site. So relatively large building, you know, we talked about the square footages. We would expect when those facilities are combined, so police and fire are combined. We'd have a square footage savings of about 10 to 15% on their, you know, if they were individually, you know, cited. Because you get a little bit of overlap and some shared things like, you know, a community or large meeting room, lobby, mechanical equipment, things like that get to be combined. So you get a little bit of a better bang for your buck on those options. You know, so those are some of the things we look at as we go through these three options. So, you know, the advantages of this option are that police-fire are centrally, you know, located together at Daley. You know, the Daley Corner site, even though it has the wetlands, has minimal flood hazard. So that, you know, isn't really an option at the 500-year flood plain level. So we're not concerned about those wetlands kind of coming up into the site. And it consolidates kind of two fire stations into one fire station to kind of allow for better staffing. To address that challenge that the chief was talking about. The challenges, however, are, you know, there is a procurement issue with the land, obviously. I think Connor will talk about that a little later on. But, you know, Daley's Corner is less centralized for the police department. So, you know, although it's site-wise okay, it's not the best for the police operations. Response is kind of centrally located, less than some other options. So DPW and public safety are still separated in this option, which I think ultimately the department heads would, would like to be together on a single site if they could be. For their kind of administrative operations, I think, and especially for storm events.
Vehicle maintenance and fueling.
Yeah, so, so that, you know, obviously isn't, you know, possible for everything. But, you know, as we look at this option, you can see kind of how crunched we are in with the public safety building here on that site. So kind of just to orient everybody. So one in the center is the apparatus bay, so where the fire trucks come out. And we'll separate the kind of fire station bunk rooms and all the living quarters over to the left of the screen. And administration, police operations over to the right of the screen. You can see that one of the kind of disadvantages is that police and personnel really only have one way in and out of the site. And that's just kind of because we're kind of pinned in by some of those wetland conditions. So public safety on Daley Corner. And we won't look at every single site for every single option in respect for your time. But we'll try to give you a kind of overview of every one little pieces. So option 3B, so that is a new police and DPW at Gill property. And a new fire headquarters at Daley Corner and renovating that substation. So just kind of where they are located on the map is helpful, especially for fire, right? We're trying to get fire apparatus and staff out to responses from the stations. Whereas police are generally out on patrol and responding from the road. And DPW gets centrally located. So a good option for DPW and police and a positive for fire, they have a pretty good coverage of the town. Looking at option 5B, so we'll dive into the sites a little bit more on this one. So this is a new police and fire headquarters at Gill property, so a public safety building. And a fire substation at Daley Corner, along with a new DPW also at Gill property. So Gill property gets built out significantly in this option. And then Daley Corner gets less developed because we're doing a substation there, so no, no fire administration, no police. It's a lot smaller of a footprint. So kind of the nice things, the advantages of this are that the three departments are kind of using one site. Allows them to, you know, in storm events and other events, have a centralized response and administration of those events. It consolidate, again, consolidates two of the fire stations into one. And it's a centralized, a centralized location to the rest of the town. So a pretty good central location on that Gill Street property. And then covering kind of the outskirts of town with the Daley Corner property for fire. One of the challenges here, I think, and again, Connor will speak to this a little bit later, is the procurement of Daley Corner. Obviously, non-publicly owned land has a process in which the town has to go about getting the, either the ownership or the rights to develop that parcel. And just a bit about what Gill property may look like. So we're developing here 10 acres out of the 110 acres. So though it looks large here in comparison to the rest of the parcel, it's really a small portion. So public safety building up front, out on Depot Street. With a connection back to kind of the other developable, large area of the site for DPW. So public safety, fire apparatus is number one. Fire station bunks, again, on the other side of the building from the administration. Community training room, so that kind of shared large meeting room that we talked about in the front of the building. That potentially could have some public uses. I think we heard Chief talk about, you know, their, their limit to training and meeting space. And, you know, we're at the council on aging.
We have meeting space problems.
So I think it's a town-wide issue that this project may be able to address in some way. Police patrol toward the back of the site and police and fire administration likely on the second floor of the building above the police patrol. So shared, so centralized fueling station, so between the two kind of developed site areas. A place where centralized fueling would take place. That would be open throughout the day for fire, police, DPW, and other town vehicles to fuel and get back on the road quickly. And then in the back of the site, a public works area and, you know, the administration, followed by the workshops. So things like the woodshop, your town electrician, and then vehicle maintenance. And at the end of the building, that, that vehicle knocked down and washed, knocked down to get heavy stuff off, washed to get the truck clean. And ultimately leading around the building to your storage area, so where the vehicles are going, you know, put into park and be ready for continued operations. It also has a large yard down on the south side of the site, which would contain the salt shed. And also your material storage bunks for stone and, I don't know what else you're storing, Dave, but sand.
A little of everything, yes.
A little bit of everything to make the roads go back to where they were supposed to be. And one added benefit of this is, you know, we talked about those community preservation funds. And that the remainder of this hospital was for recreational use. So it's possible here that we could create a connection to that recreational use, trailhead, a parking area, things like that. Making that site accessible where it really isn't right now. And we'll just jump to Daley Corner. So you can see Daley Corner, you know, fire substation, so a much smaller footprint, you know, we're at about 12,000 square feet here. Compared to, you know, 50-something thousand square feet. So again, fire apparatus, fire bunk in kind of their day area. And it would also have a septic system here. So plenty of room to develop those things on this site for this fire substation. And one thing I would point out, because it did come out amongst the group, is, you know, you're entering out onto Main Street. So a fire preemption would be necessary here. And I would say that would probably be the same at the other Gill property. But here, that preemption could be tied into the existing light at the intersection. In order to stop three directions of traffic and let the westbound lane of Main Street flow through. So the apparatus is coming out, you know, kind of back past the turning lanes where traffic would get tied up. So the nice part about this is we're able to push that apparatus bay deck a little bit back compared to the public safety building. Get them out beyond where the turning lanes are and traffic would, you know, may be kind of queued up to turn. So that stuff's all possible and would be addressed in any potential design for this site.
So just before we move on to the next slide, which is another video from Chief Alexander, who couldn't be here tonight. Just addressing, so Daley's Corner, not town-owned. As part of this project, we would need to go through procurement. That's something that we would need to put before town meeting, we're opening the warrant tonight. We've been open with Stonehill and Inversus True. They're, they're open to this possibility. They see it as a value add in that area. Because they understand that, you know, public works and police have some impact based on where they're located. But for fire, it's an incredibly important decision where these stations are located. And on that note, those following along have surely picked up that the three alternatives that municipal building committee has selected. All contemplate a two-station model for fire. The chief on an earlier slide identified some of the staffing challenges with our current four 10-person groups that we staff. With the current three-station model, I think your average person driving by a fire station doesn't assume there's two people in them. But for two out of three of them, that is the case. But we want to make sure that folks that are saying we're not contemplating a shift of this size. But we want to make sure that folks understand we're not contemplating a shift of this size lightly or flippantly. As we've touched on, there's already a station response time study. We'll be able to have good data for that thanks to SEMREC, the information that they collect for centralized 911, including for the neighboring communities that are in there. And we will make sure that that response study is informing any of the potential recommendations moving forward for schematic design, and we wouldn't be going into that phase with municipal building committee unless and until that response study verifies the operational capacity for response to folks, no matter where they live. I think although we're waiting on the final report, we've gotten a kind of preliminary bill of health from the consultant to indicate that this site and Gil can work, and we're going to get that detailed report. That'll be shared with municipal building committee and the community as part of our engagement calendar in September, but I wanted to just address that out of the gate. Similarly, you'll notice that, talking about the existing kind of real estate that town has, that Depot Street, which was recently renovated and is in good shape, isn't listed as a substation here. We want to be super clear, we're not suggesting closing or more specifically selling or getting rid of that site. It's a great site, and we would be exploring continued service for that within the fire family, perhaps for CERT. We just spoke about how at existing headquarters on Bay Road, we have CERT vehicles either taking up apparatus space that ought to be for fire EMS, or those vehicles are currently just unsheltered and not being utilized.
And so I think Connor summed it up well, but, you know, hearing it through the person who's responsible.
One of the things we've been trying to do with this project is look at how the fire department utilizes staff better. And by going to a two-station model, using data to locate two fire stations precisely in an area that would allow us to maximum efficiency for response, we'd be able to spread our fire players out in a more efficient way to provide a more quality response, more consistent response to all of our residents, north and south, in the boundaries of the area which we struggle in, in the north of town which has been built up, whether it's Stonehill College or in the center of town. By spreading our staff into a more efficient model through two stations, we'll be able to provide better service to all of our residents.
And so, you know, chief has spoken about this, and we're looking at all of these options with our consultant to ensure that the fire response is appropriate. And, you know, as you can see by kind of where they're located on the map, that puts both stations on kind of heavily traveled roads that are at a higher rate of speed and gets them kind of up and down north and south and east to west a little bit faster than, say, Lothrum Street, where they're kind of have to be very careful coming through, you know, kind of numerous stop signs.
Numerous stop signs.
Numerous stop signs and heavily settled area, they're able to get out onto faster travel lanes, much wider streets where they have better vision, are able to travel at a higher rate of speed and get to, you know, any incident a little bit faster. So our consultant has been in town, the deputy chief was nice enough to take him on a full tour of town. I think it took a little while and also visit all of the sites. So he not only has the technical background to do this kind of work, he's been here, kind of boots on the ground to make sure that he understands the conditions in the field and any kind of anomalies that, you know, are here in Easton, you know, downtown, other things that may inhibit your understanding of the data, just on a data level. Just in talking a little bit about kind of what the future may look like, we just wanted to show, you know, we didn't have any fancy renderings or anything, but to show a little bit about what modern facilities of this type look like. I'll throw this to Brian since most of them are his.
Yeah. So we all know Mansfield, your neighbor next door. We actually teamed up with Kesselboos as well back in 2016 and designed and built that. This is in the back of the site, the public safety's in the front where the DPW was. You know, to the right, you can see Grafton, that's not too far away. You know, we tried to pick similar-sized DPWs that you would expect here. So yeah, Grafton was a brand-new site, we clear-cut that, and then what's nice about it is you have the fuel and operations, which not the whole town uses, but still it would be very similar to what Easton has. You know, you can see the salt shed way in the back, you know, it's a very good yard. If you're driving down the Masspike, you can actually see it. Down in the bottom left, that's Holden, currently still under construction, should be finished in a month. Very similar size, a little bit different of a shape. That silver building in the back is a fabric salt shed, so there's a few types that we would use depending on, you know, the size and the cost for that. And then there's Yarmouth, that's a very different version, it's a very inviting building for a DPW. You drive by and you actually don't feel, you know, like it's a gigantic jiffy loop, as I'd say. But yeah, that one just finished up very recently and everyone seemed very happy with it.
So as you can see, you know, DPWs are large metal buildings, so they're the most cost-wise efficient buildings and allow you to get the most free open space for, you know, things like vehicles and things like that. So inside, you can see, you know, Brian will talk a little bit about all the cool stuff inside, but.
Yeah, so on the left, you could see a kind of state-of-the-art vehicle maintenance. You have a full lift for the bulldozer loader in the background, excuse me, and then you have, you know, mobile columns that you would typically see for the fire department and some of the bigger vehicles. You know, those can lift about 75,000 pounds plus sometimes. You have exhaust rails for vehicles running inside during the winter. You have the adequate ventilation that's required for maintenance. That is per the building code, currently that does not occur. You actually have to drop ducts down to the floor for that, about 12 inches off the floor to get the appropriate exhaust. And then we have all the reels in the right, you can kind of see the yellow metal structure that has all the reels for all the fluids and everything for the mechanics to place in the vehicles. Then on the right, that's actually the Yarmouth DPW interior. That is approximately 18,000 square foot interior storage, all their vehicles can fit in there in the inside. So on the right, we have bigger dump trucks, and then on the left, you can see we have a mezzanine where you can store, you know, other equipment that the DPW would typically use, seasonal road paint maybe, you know. They have a very robust building maintenance facilities division, so, you know, you could imagine there could be a lot of things up there. And then as you can see down the middle is a trench train that would kind of catch everything as it's, you know, if it is leaking out of the vehicles.
So important things about the DPW and just kind of letting you know what these, you know, you see square footage is on the page, but what they really result in in terms of buildings. So we'll jump over to the public safety side, so, you know, just keeping with the same theme because most people have driven by, Mansfield Public Safety in the center. On the top left is Acton Fire, so that is a fire substation, very similarly sized to the potential substation here. And that building is close to, if not net zero, with a geothermal system. So the ability to not only make the buildings efficient for operations, but efficient for, you know, the environment is really there, and we're able to do that in that site. Jumping over, top right is the community room that we talked about in Mansfield Public Safety, which is, from what I understand, booked pretty solid. They not only do their police-fire trainings in there, they also host a number of trainings for those departments, so outside agencies come in and the department benefits by getting kind of free seats in those trainings for hosting those. But also that room is used extensively at night for community events, community meetings, boards, committees. When I lived in Mansfield, getting a room for a board meeting was pretty tough some nights, so this is just kind of another place where they can have one of their boards or committees meet in a not-too-bad place. On the bottom, Nantucket Public Safety, so our department over in Nantucket, so this was built, police in 2010 and then fire in 2016. So it was a public safety building built in two portions. So we're able to work kind of those things out and create really a cohesive design for the departments. And I'll turn it over to Connor to talk about kind of, you know, next steps and, you know, the community's ability to learn more about the project.
So first, thank you all for your patience. We know it's a very long presentation, and we are bringing it to a close. This is our planned schedule of public events for the fall for folks who couldn't be here tonight, want to learn more in a different format than 700 slides. We have been pretty fortunate to work on a lot of pretty large projects in the past with a lot of great support from the board and the community, frankly, including enormous sewer projects, roadway projects, Blanche Ames Construction. So we know as a team it's really important to lay out a variety of different options for folks to engage and learn more. So September is going to see a variety of formal updates to our boards and committees. We'll have municipal building committee meeting, we will be presenting a truncated version of this to the finance committee and inviting the chairs of every board and committee in Easton to come to that on Zoom. There will be in-person tours for the public on the 21st and 27th respectively of police-fire and then DPW. For folks who can't make it on that date, we'll be filming video tours of ECAT and uploading those online during the month of September. We'll be at NRT and Borderline Family Fun Day, not just because those will be fun, but we'll have a project table for folks to learn more in person. And the plan is for on October 4th, municipal building committee to be voting which of these three alternatives moves forward into the next phase of project, which is schematic design. Finally, if you want to advance, please. We have a project webpage, it's easton.ma.us/mbc. This has everything you could possibly want to know about this project, going back to the 2014 facilities assessment study, all the various boards and committees it's been presented to over the years, the votes that have been taken by the select board, by town meeting to advance this. And as the project advances, we'll be uploading copies of our presentations and all of our reports there so that anyone who wants to dig into this in more detail can get the proposals from our project managers and designers and really dig into the nooks and crannies there and learn more. So thank you, and we're happy to answer questions.
Well, thank you. This is a lot of information, but you presented it in a way that's very concise and very detailed at the same time, but easy to understand. I'm going to start with Jamie, because Jamie, you're on the municipal building committee, so I'm interested in your perspective on this.
Yeah, I'll say, first thing, if nobody has, if you've yet to tour these buildings, this presentation just scratches the surface. And when you've been in there and you think about us wanting to recruit a more diverse group to join, police-fire, even DPW, well, these buildings, if you came and you toured, I'd be looking at Mansfield in the heartbeat to say, you know what? Let's face it, our workspace is pretty important to people from a health perspective, quality of life perspective, and quite frankly, I'm not going to sugarcoat it, it's awful today. And so I've spent quite a bit of time in the police-fire and a little bit in DPW, and I wouldn't want to be a firefighter and work out of that facility or a police officer. And I'll say, from an environmental perspective, if you've been in that building, yes, they're connected, and everything we bring into the fireside, it doesn't prevent it from spreading to the police side as well. We've done mold mitigation over there, we've, you know, we've done everything we can to prop up buildings that, as we talked about, were built in the 1950s and 60s when the town population, and I'm going to throw it out there, was maybe 10,000.
That's about right.
People. And we're now pushing 26,000 people. We've far surpassed the useful lives of these buildings. And again, we need to be thinking about the quality of life of the people that we ask to be on the front line serving us every day, and these department heads, you know, push right back and say, you know, they're excellent department heads, what are we giving them to help treat their people better? And I think this is an easy one. I think this is a softball for us to pull together as a community and say, we've all learned and understand what first responders do for us, let's go out there and show them that we're serious about it and committed to the quality of life that they deserve. So, great job. Thanks for being here, and it's a real honor to be part of the committee and to learn as much as I add, and I'll continue to learn throughout the process.
Thanks, Jamie. I appreciate that perspective, and I thank you for serving on that important committee and representing the select board. Craig?
I just would like to echo parts of what Jamie said, that I've taken a tour with David and the DPW, and I encourage every town member, every community member to take that tour because you'll see what they have to work with in that DPW space, and all the equipment outside is a real concern. And we had the opportunity when former chief Gary Sullivan retired and our new chief Boone took over, to be in that building on Lothrum Street and seeing the desks in the hallway and being in a room with no ventilation, no windows, with I don't know how many people were there. So I can see those kinds of issues that people are talking about, and I'm very intrigued with the whole process, Jamie, of looking at all these different sites and figuring out what makes the most sense. And I look forward to hearing about response times and where, you know, these different things. And it's a very exciting project, and I think that, as Jamie said, I think that our people deserve it, not only the community people, but our people who work for us as well.
Thanks, Craig. Mark?
So I'm going to talk about the operational logistics piece. The quality of life for all you guys is really important, but you can't do your jobs operationally, logistically, the spaces that you have is not cutting it, not even close to cutting it. Dave, I think, and I've been doing this for like seven years, every year I turn to you and say, I don't know how you do what you do with what you have. I have no clue. You must be some sort of wizard. We saw the pictures up there. So I don't think that we can continue with what we have at all. It's the year 2022, these are 70 years old, population's grown from 10,000 to 26,000. It's just, it's common sense to me that it's time to bring in some new buildings. And outstanding presentation. I look forward to seeing what you guys come up with and fully supportive.
John? I think, so the concept we sometimes hear is this idea of doing more with less, and I think when you see what Dave, what the fire department, what the police department are dealing with, it's the, it's just in-your-face example of pushing the boundaries of doing more with less, to the point where you're compromising the safety and well-being of your staff, you're compromising your ability to operate efficiently and effectively, environmental benefits, you know, just, there's a host of reasons that this is, we're crossing that line. We've crossed it, and we can't keep doing that, which is why I think the timing of this is critically important. One of the things you spoke about a lot that was really important to me was this issue with decontamination and materials and exposure to chemicals. I worked in this space directly for years before my recent career path took me elsewhere. And we're really just starting to scratch the surface of what chemical exposure can be doing to our health. And the fact that firefighters and by extension where the police department is, are exposed to these sorts of things, we don't have a process for dealing with it, it's really a big problem. And it's going to, has potential effects on reproductive health, on cancer rates. There's so many things that we just are starting to uncover. And when you see a facility that handles this well, it really draws, drives home the point of how important this is. The synergies that come with proximity of having your public safety facilities work together is a really important value add that I think is hard to quantify, but, you know, we've seen in other places. And another thing that didn't get spoken about as much, but was talked about how kind of shoehorning uses is training facilities. We're in an environment where there's an increased value and importance continuously on training. And when you see these sites that are done, they have resources and facilities that support those needs on a regular basis as opposed to having to go offsite or get creative with things like stairwells that get repurposed eventually because it can't even be used for safety. So I think that's all really important, and I'd be really, I'm excited to see what kind of environmental efficiencies come out as this process unfolds and we learn about what can be done on each site. One question I do have is, it doesn't hurt to ask now, what is the timing for talking about, once a plan is selected, what other uses of the properties, the properties that are freed up? When can we have a discussion about those can be used for? I'm putting on my affordable housing hat right now and saying, great opportunity here.
I see multiple nods.
Yes.
That depends, I mean, conceptually now, right? And I have a feeling we may get asked in five minutes about that, but that's one of the exciting opportunities. It's a huge responsibility we take seriously, but one that we think we've been able to navigate with other complex projects, that not only does this create an opportunity where we can right-size facilities for our first responders to have them in safe places so they can take care of the community, it creates opportunities for us with older buildings that even if they're in okay shape, just it's the equal they're in, um, okay shape, just, it's the equivalent of having an antique car, right? We use this analogy when we were talking about the school, that even if there was a perfect maintenance program with perfect funding, uh, we, we would just have antiques, right? And so if you had a perfectly maintained nineteen fifties vehicle, you probably still don't want your toddler in the back of it, right? So, you end up in a situation where if you're no longer using these sites, uh, for a municipal use, that, uh, becomes a decision for the board, uh, and, and with input from the community on, you know, what, what do we think these sites could be? And, uh, one area is, is potentially affordable housing, typically when we are doing, uh, something like this, we'll look to pre-established plans of the community, of the citizens of community, the Housing Production Plan, Open Space Recreation Plan, the Invision Easton Master Plan, to take some inspiration to start forming up some ideas, uh, that we can recommend and, and, and get ideas flowing, but, but there's certainly potential, and depending on which alternative is selected, there may be different pieces of real estate available in the future for, um, reuse or redevelopment.
Okay. Now, it's just really important to make sure we have those conversations early and thoughtfully in the process, because it's a great opportunity, um, that we shouldn't go unnoticed.
So I agree with everything that my fellow Select Board member said about the, um, safety of our staff and our commitment to the, the public and, and the work that we do, but I think I want to approach this from a business sense. Um, I'm thinking about going back to what we spoke about in the beginning, is the cost, uh, from these studies that we've done, just to get these buildings up to the proper code and trigger ADA compliance, you know, it's really, I wouldn't say it's a disgrace that our community doesn't have A- ADA compliant buildings for our public safety, um, we really have to be thinking about that, and every year we wait to do this, the cost is going up exponentially, so the faster that we can get this done, and to do these and consolidate, um, these projects together for the commodity, uh, the scale, the scale of, um, how we put this together, I think the timing is right now. Um, we've been trying to think about these for, for years, you know, leading up to this, but now is really the time, I don't think we can wait any longer for this, and I hope, you know, I was thinking, when I was looking at the slides, I would be putting my worst slides forward of what the buildings look like, these don't even really, like, I think you said it, Craig, they don't scratch the surface, you have to go in person, and I would encourage people when tours become available, go in person and experience it live, the, the cramped feelings of, like, the anxious feeling that you walk into some of these areas with the closed rooms and no windows and the air quality's bad, I'm not exaggerating, I, I invite people to see it themselves, but to ask people to work in those conditions, people that, you know, are really valued as our staff, um, the public that goes into these buildings, I think, um, there's no exaggeration for what we need for this, so, thank you for the, the great presentation, and for all the work that every one of you has put into this, having been on the school planning committee, it was exhaustive, we looked at every single piece and part and configuration, so I know that you've put a tremendous amount of work into this, and really excited to see what the next steps are. So I'm going to ask, uh, there's public in the room tonight, so I assume some people are interested in this, um, if anybody in the public has a comment or a question and you want to come up, just, uh, let me know, come on up to the microphone, please.
And name and address.
And state, state your name and address for the record, and the questions will go through me as the chair.
Okay, sure. Yeah, my name is Tom Stone, I live on Sheldon Street, and, uh, in full transparency and disclosure here, I'm a lifelong resident of Easton. I spent thirty-four years on the Eastern Fire Department, my last ten years as chief. And, um, I, I, I want to commend th- this committee and all the work they've done, they've certainly recognized the needs of the facilities, uh, and, and what they're lacking and, and what, what needs to be done for the future, so I think they've done a tremendous job there. But a couple of questions, and, and, um, I, I'm just wondering, and I know they're still working on the response time study, which I think is absolutely critical, and I hope it also includes not just road times, response times, but it factors in where the main life safety hazards are throughout the town and, and the facilities that they go to constantly, and I'm sure the deputy will agree that, you know, the assisted living centers, uh, the one at Depot Street, the nursing home on Lincoln Street, uh, we're building a brand-new school that's going to be in Lothrup Street, so we're going to have every single student in the town, with the exception of the, uh, students at the regional, are going to be located right there every day, that's a huge life safety factor, brand-new buildings, thanks God, thank God, that are, that are sprinkled. Well, my question, um, would be, is, I wonder if there was any reference or research done on the previous studies that were done on the fire department? Uh, just over the course of my career, there was two main studies done, and, uh, all of these issues were batted over and over again, and I know the chief's not here, he, he made a nice presentation, and I understand his concept of going to two stations, you put more firefighters in fewer facilities, that adds to firefighter safety, that cannot be argued, I, that, that's a tremendous, uh, safety factor for the firefighters, but I am concerned about the increase in runs, runtimes, response times for the rest of the town, and again, in those previous studies, we batted over and over again, how could we get down, what were the best locations for two stations as opposed to three, so I, I would really be interested in what the, the response time study comes up with. And then finally, um, th- this whole thing hinges tremendously on that Stonehill property. If the town's not able to acquire that property, we might be back to the drawing board in, in terms of making changes, so, that's all I have right now.
So, I, I, Chief Stone, great comments, appreciate all of them, I'm going to take the Stonehill one, and Ben, you were already nodding along, as far as it's a great point with not just looking at the roadways, but where, uh, some of the main volume drivers are, right? Uh, just even from ten years ago, I think ambulance runs have doubled, uh, from shy, uh, you know, about that, and, uh, total runs have gone up by more than fifty percent. Um, so on the Stonehill piece, that's something that we'll be drilling down on during this period before, uh, a, um, uh.
選挙
Uh, no, way before that, uh, if I, if we're.
選挙
Uh, that's right, before we, um, get to a point of selecting an alternative, and that came up with Municipal Building Committee, that, uh, we don't want to find ourselves in a position or put the community in a position where we're putting our eggs in a basket that has unknowns, uh, outside of our control, uh, as I said, Stonehill's been very open about their, their, uh, interest and support of this concept, and we're going to, uh, work to try to formalize that within, uh, you know, the rules we have to follow on procurement, uh, in short order, so that we're not getting too far down that path and having to go back to the drawing board.
You can, you can tell them a former fire chief graduated from Stonehill.
And you, would you please, I.
Yeah, so.
As far as the life saves centers, that's great.
Yeah, so, um, our consultant, Manitow Incorporated, uh, is run by a former Deputy Fire Commissioner, uh, he has a PhD in, uh, planning, so, uh, this is kind of, you know, comes from the fire service but has a planning background, uh, so he is who we look to, uh, to do all these things, and yes, uh, the, the study does look at not only just runtimes from a station to, uh, uh, an address, uh, how it used to be done maybe twenty years ago, uh, it looks at, uh, you know, call concentration centers, where responses are, what responses go where, uh, what apparatus and firefighters are at each location that they're responding from, uh, it also incorporates, you know, uh, callback, it incorporates, uh, municipal aid, and all of those things that affect, uh, the study, so, um, I will not pretend to know everything about that, uh.
Not everything.
And, and I think it's important that, um, you know, e- every community is a little bit different, I'd say, Easton's a little bit different than Mansfield, is a little bit different than Foxborough, uh, and so having him come and, and tour with the deputy chief, uh, who's been in town, uh, his entire life, maybe?
Yeah.
And see those areas, uh, that are not only frequent flyers, uh, especially for the ambulance, uh, but also kind of the hard-to-reach areas, so, you know, uh, you know, you go out toward, uh, kind of the corners of town, uh, and things get a little bit harder to reach, uh, so, uh, making sure that we understand where population density is, where call density and call volume come from, and where responses are ultimately triggered is important. Uh, I would say, you know, in regards to, uh, the previous studies, uh, look, they were done at the time and, and resulted in, uh, you know, us with the model that we're in currently, uh, and I'd say, over the course of time, uh, not only has, um, uh, the fire, uh, department changed a bit with apparatus, staffing, uh, and things like that, but the town has changed a bit, so, um, where your population density and call volumes were then, uh, aren't necessarily reflective of where they are now, uh, the constant is the station location, right, and, and what has changed are, uh, you know, recent developments along one thirty-eight, uh, you know, down Depot Street and continuing to develop down Depot Street, uh, and, and down, uh, you know, in the Foundry, uh, area, uh, where the department currently has, uh, some challenges based on that kind of two, uh, firefighter model out of, uh, Station Three, so, uh, you know, a short answer is yes, all of those things are considered in that, uh, response time study. Inevitably, response times to individual addresses will change, uh, but the, um, the goal is to get everybody in town an adequate response.
Correct, right, you can't be everywhere at the same time. I know they refer to kind of that Mansfield, you showed them, uh, Mansfield headquarters there, and, uh, that, that model, but Mansfield's only twenty square miles, Easton's thirty, so it's almost, you know, one station per ten square miles, but, um, yeah, no, like I say, you, you hit the, you're on ahead, and it sounds like you got it all covered, so I look forward to, uh, sitting in on some more of these meetings, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief, we appreciate your, uh, great questions, and we thank you for your service to the town.
Well, thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Hey, Dad. Nikki Disumi in one oh four Killsey Road, thank you all for a great presentation, really well-done and executed and presented. Just wanted to echo Select Board Member Jen Stacy's comments and once more advocate for, um, when or if and when the town is able to consider surplus properties, to keep in mind affordable housing needs. Um, the Affordable Housing Trust recently procured, um, a five-year housing plan that, um, illustrated the need for affordable senior family and group home needs, affordable housing needs, and just wanted to, um, advocate for that once more, the consideration of that, thank you.
Thank you, Nikki.
Thank you.
I think it's awesome to have two people stand up and advocate for affordable housing tonight, so, uh, thank you for being here and staying through the presentation. Anyone else?
Andy, you've been super patient, do you want to add anything from MBC?
Sure.
Put you on the spot?
For those who don't know, I am the Chair of the Municipal Building Committee, I've been on the committee now, I think, for about five, six years, um, and we kind of started this project at twenty nineteen, when Dave was kind enough to put together, um, basically a list of priorities, anyone who's read the DOR and WIDE report, I don't know who has, it takes a little bit, it's about eight, nine hundred pages, so I have two. So Dave really helped boil that down, and one of the things we did back then as a committee is we did tour all these places, and the committee is a great makeup right now of registered professional engineers, we have registered architects, um, other tech people, uh, facilities people, so it's a really good mix, and we also have the folks, uh, from the school committee, um, who are involved in the early elementary school projects, so that's very helpful, um, as well. But it became very clear to us, looking at the, from a technical perspective, that, um, there's really no way to renovate those facilities when you've walked through those facilities and seen them, and really, I think with the chiefs, and there were different chiefs back then when we walked them, but, uh, Dave was there, um, I think the biggest thing was the programming, it just, that's the part that really, you know, really just jumped out, is what they explain, what they need, um, and what those facilities can provide, it wasn't even close, and one of the things we did, and maybe this is a suggestion, I don't know how many people you could bring to Mansfield for a tour, Dave, Dave's going to be asked a lot, but, I think what, we went on a tour a couple months ago over to the Mansfield facility, and that was eye-opening, you know, and so, one of the things I thought of when we watched the presentation is it always is good, because I watched the presentation through the school, and that really went through very well, um, I think the big thing is not only showing them kind of the conditions that we have, but maybe something close to home, um, that it was light years ahead, I mean, that was eye-opening to go there, I hope everyone actually, I know we've talked about maybe doing a couple more tours there, so, that was my perspective, thank you.
That was a great point, and thank you for leading that committee for, for all these years.
No problem.
Thanks, Andy.
So, I, you know, I think the bottom line is, uh, everybody seems to be supportive of this, and this isn't a luxury, this is a necessity now, so, you know, we're not, uh, looking to do these pie-in-the-sky projects with, um, you know, all the extra bells and whistles, this is just, uh, critical to, to our next growth of the community and for people that are going to be our future first responders and, uh, people that will be living in this town for the next fifty years, so, thank you so much for all your work on this, can't wait to see the next part.
Thank you.
Thank you.